I'd like to call the May 16th to 2019, 2019 meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Welcome. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlist.
This evening's guests include Dick Carter, Roberta Everslaj, and Patrick Feeney.
Thank you. Welcome. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sobchak.
Dr. Cook, tonight we have no awards and recognitions.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the open forum. It's a section of the board agenda for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, and that instance, the chair may limit a person's commitment to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium and should be respectful and civil and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this sitting setting when the matter concerns personnel or student issues or matters that are being addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes or are otherwise a subject of review by the college or board. There are no registered speakers this evening, so the open forum is closed. Student Senate report. Is Mr. Tiger Harris-Webster here?
We've got a whole bunch of people.
Ankeet is here. He's gotta be here.
I can take him up coming.
Ankeet, would you please approach the podium?
So I'll be filling in for Tiger today, I assume. Senate's been doing a lot better this year round. I've been in Senate for a while now. I'm also serving on the exec board as parliamentarian. I'm also the next president in line. We just had our most successful event yet, the tie-dye event that we did. We served more than 300-plus students with shirts and like, also, we had a time capsule set up, so we got a lot of messages from the student, around 300 messages to put in that time capsule. Other than that, we had like an award ceremony to recognize the service that our senators and the exec board did, and we also celebrated our advisor, great addition to the team. That being said, that's, I think, everything that I can think of that's been happening so far.
Tell us a little bit about yourself as the incoming president.
So I've been with Senate for quite a while before this. I'm actually an international student. We've had the best turnout in terms of elections for this election, which is, it was really competitive, and we, well, basically won by a very thin margin, but it was, it was a fair election and all that. Other than that, I'm an international student. I've lived entire life in Australia. America was like the first destination, JCC, very affordable, right? That was the major driving force to get me here. Being here, I'm just a very involved individual, and I like to get involved in everything. So that's why I chose Senate, because I just saw how involved the people in Senate were to making events on campus a reality, like making events more fun, giving money to clubs and stuff so they can have their events going, and yeah.
Not everybody in the room knows your name, and would you also introduce the rest of your exec board who's here tonight, too?
Okay. My name's Ankeet. I'm the president-elect. We've got Dalal, who's gonna be my VP for the next exec board. We've also got Lisa, who's going to be the parliamentarian, following after me. We've got Sonia, who's gonna be the treasurer, and we've got another member, Carolyn, who's absent today. That being said, here's Tiger, our president. That's all.
Thanks, thanks. Appreciate it. Tiger, you're on.
All right. Well, stall talk music. We have great people with our organization. Well, thank you so much. I'm used to hanging out here for 30 minutes before we do anything, so, anything with me at least. Well, first thing to dive into is we have our club request that we did. Last month, we had a really busy month, so Luna did a, did like a festival end of the year. We had 460, or, sorry, let me just grab my notes real fast. Sorry for running a little bit late.
Ankeet was sensational, by the way. You have a tough act to follow, Tiger.
I just want to warn you, he said, "I'm in command now." Alexander Haig all over again.
It's official right after this meeting, so. But, so we had, yeah, so we were, sorry, let me just, let me just pull this up. All right, I'll just go off without the notes. But yeah, so these are all the events that we did. Business Marketing had a denim drive, which was really fantastic. So if you've seen those denim boxes around campus, they're revamping some of those, and they make insulation for buildings, and they're also gonna be expanding that outside of the school. So that's part of their development. International Club, they had over 100 people at their event, which was the $525, and Ultimate Frisbee Club is one of the most fresh clubs on campus, for sure. They had a award ceremony, and they're doing some jerseys, and actually competing with people and organizations all around the college, or all around the state. So they're competing with all around, with colleges outside the state. So all together, we had six events this month, and we allocated $2,591, and overall, 254 people attended those events, so we're pretty happy about that. Our budget, so we have $3,195, and we aim to save about $3,000 every year so that the next executive board, they have summer planning, they can buy swag, and just kind of plan out for the rest of the year, and go on a retreat as well. So we had our clubbies awards, which we were really excited to do, and these were the winners of each award for the groups. So for the outstanding student organization, we had the Honor Society. For Community Service Project of the Year, we had the Blue Jeans, which is their, yeah, their expansion of their program. For Luna, we had a, for the event of the year, it was the Day of the Dead event that they did around campus, so it was a really great cultural event. And then for the Collaboration of the Year, there's a lot of engagement with the, I don't know, voter registration, so Honor Society and Pi Phi Kappa brought a lot of groups on campus to get people registered. And for Spirit Award, which is something that Student Senate sponsors, Ultimate Frisbee won, just because they have so many people and they're affecting so many people around campus, and they're almost out there every day. For the Student Year, Student Leader of the Award, Isaiah won, and he's the head of Business Marketing, and I also won for Student Senate. For Member of the Year, we had Katie Karim in Graphic Design, and Maria Marzen Martens for the Student, she's the president of the Student Honor Association, so they're well-deserved. And Tara Karim also won the Advisor of the Year for Pi Phi Kappa, just gains people really involved. I don't know if you've seen her around campus, but she's helped a lot of students out, gain members, and just maintain their honor-ship in the Honor Association. So we had like three new clubs this year, Cyber Security Club, Friends of Internationals, and our last meeting of the year, we helped sponsor and recognize Young Life, so they just became an official club on campus, so we're really excited about that. So we had our grand opening for the Career Closet at Cavcraze. We had some mannequins set around campus, and we got a lot of interaction. We also did a tie-dye event at Cavcraze, and we helped, we, we did 350 shirts, so it was quite a bit, a lot of students came by, and so it was really great for Student Senate. We had our logos on most of them, so, you know, spreading the word to Student Senate was a great campaigning process. We have two, so we had two letters of, two letters of support, which I brought copies for everyone. So for these letters, it, it's for the Diversity, Inclusion, and Quality Task Force, as well as the College Promise Program, and we, as the Student Senate, just felt like these were things that we wanted to voice our opinion on, and you can see there's one signature that's missing from these pages, and I didn't have time to copy the official document, but one of our senators was absent, and she signed the official document, which is with Ann Turney. So if you have any questions on that, feel free to email myself, or you can email Ann or Ankeet now, so, yes.
Tiger, Trusty Cross just whispered in my ear, and I didn't know the answer. Could you explain a little bit about what Young Life is?
Young Life, yeah. So it's, it's really popular amongst high schools and colleges, and it's a Christian organization that, they're kind of like a relaxed Christian organization, that's how they phrased it, so they just really want people to come in and kind of just form a community, and they do like sports, a lot more activities, and then if they're willing to talk about their religion, or they want to talk about Jesus, then they kind of introduce them and plug them into a church. So it's, it's kind of like just a more relaxed Christian organization.
Now, on a personal note, I forget, but a month or two ago, you challenged me specifically, was it the denim?
Oh, yes.
Was it the denim deal or the shoe craze?
Yeah, the shoes, yeah.
And you, you heard that I, that I wore boots.
I, I did hear this, yeah, for multiple people.
And you indicated that I should donate a pair of those boots.
It would be.
To the campaign. But I wasn't sure about size, and then I got to thinking that you, obviously, I would expect to have several pair of boots, but when visiting, you said you didn't have any boots. And so I kind of put the two things together, and so I just took it upon myself to get you a pair of boots that I think will.
Nice.
If those boots don't work out for you, here's a box for them.
All right.
And they can go in there and see me, and we'll get something that works for you.
Made in the USA.
It is. But thanks for all your good work, and thanks for the challenge. Wish you good luck.
Well, on that note, I'm just gonna be closing out, and I just wanted to say again how much I appreciate this opportunity, and again, I'm sorry for running late today, but I've really valued this, and coming, just having the opportunity to come and speak before you all and representing the students here, the things I've been able to see and just experience has been really life-changing for me, and yeah, so I appreciate you guys giving me this opportunity. I appreciate the work that you've done for students, so thank you so much.
Thanks, Tiger.
Question?
Trusty Musa.
I want to ask about the Friends of International Students Club, the new club, because we have an international student club, so what, how do those two interact?
Yeah, so it's always, you know, like, we, we love when students come to us with clubs, and we have a lot of different Christian organizations, especially on campus, and so we've never, I think, shot down a club idea, but what they've said, the reason why we really like this, this organization is because they're really involved with UMKC and KU and K-State, and so, and they've got clubs around different universities in like Iowa and Oklahoma, I think. So I don't know how exactly they're gonna interact. They've said that they, they've just started, so they've only met a few times this year. But I went to one of their like, like house parties, which is like, they were watching like a football game, and they had all the different universities come together for that. But International Club is the largest club on campus, so they have like 90 to 100 people that attend each meeting. So, but they haven't said that they've exactly gonna collaborate very much, but I don't know, if they're gonna remain separate.
Well, I, I don't know how we can help, but I would hope that, I mean, I assume to be in the International Club, you have to be an international student?
Oh, no, no. Yeah, we, we have a lot of locals, because one of the main things is this, so many of the International Club are members, they don't really have an opportunity to go out in the city, like, they might not have cars, so they're kind of just stuck in this area, so they want to connect them with locals so that, you know, you can go downtown and experience a lot of things, so they have a lot of local members.
But I, I just hope the two would collaborate, because I'm glad to hear that, because it's, we, we tend to get into our own, and especially these days, it seems politically or otherwise, in our own little tribes, and we ought to be, I mean, the advantage to local students to meet with international students is huge, and then hopefully vice versa, so I, I'd look forward to that. And if I, if I may, just to thank Tiger for his year, and I'm glad there was a little bit of controversy in your year that Student Senate had to address, because that's the best way to learn, both as a leader, you as Student Senate President, and the student senators that were involved in reviewing the tuition, the tuition issue, and these other issues that you submitted letters on, because that's really how you learn and grow, and it's not that it's fun, but it's, you'll look back on that as a learning experience, and it was, I think it was for all of us, so I really appreciate what you've done, the time you've spent, and your leadership team, and look, look forward to next year.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that. Remember, I'm a PK, so I've dealt with a lot of controversy and.
Trusty Cross, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Tiger, and just ask Mr. Chair, you've spent a couple decades in Kansas City area, but you're from North Dakota and Wyoming.
Minnesota.
Minnesota. So you can take the boy out of the country, but you can't take the country out of the door.
Well, I don't know about that, but.
Thank you, Tiger.
Dr. Sobchak.
Tiger, you know, we could ask you to try those boots on right now in front of everybody.
I might do it.
We're not, we're not gonna do that. But I want to thank you. You elevated the Student Senate in many ways, and I think you set some precedence that will be carried on down the road. So thank you for your leadership. I always enjoyed my time that I got to spend with you, and we look forward to what you're gonna be doing. So would you mind sharing what your next step is?
So I'll be going to Grand Canyon University in Phoenix, Arizona, and I'm gonna be studying psychology and business and pursue a master's in IO psychology, so that's industrial organizational psychology. So that is the four or five-year plan, but, yeah.
And I've not been on campus there, but I have reason to believe that they wear boots in Arizona.
Yeah. That's good. All right. Well, I just wanted to invite Ankeet. I think, I don't know if he's already given his welcoming, he's done? All right, well, thank you again for the time.
Thanks, Tiger. Ankeet and team, welcome, and congratulations, and Tiger, thanks again for everything. Appreciate it. Mr. Carter, lobbyist report, and no, don't be expecting any boots, but.
I was just gonna say, I'm available to go to Allen Edmonds', which is just down the street, and they're open till nine this evening, if you have some time after the board meeting.
How do you know that?
Who said that? You've, you've got my report in front of you, and so I won't go down that piece by piece. I did want to highlight a few items contained in the report and talk a little bit about a couple of things that have come up since the report was, was sent out in your packet. This is one of the shortest sessions that we've seen in recent history, if not, certainly in as long as anyone who is presently at the State House can remember. We had a 78-day session, leaving 12 days on the table. Usually, it's the opposite of that in going into overtime, but the legislature adjourned in the middle of the night on the 5th of May, and we'll come back on the 29th of May for signee die, which is the formal closure of, of the legislative session. At that point, they'll address any other business that may be out there, or look at any vetoes if, if needed or desired, and so we'll see what happens. There is one that's out there related to the tax policy package that the legislature passed for a second time with, with a smaller price tag. It's unknown if the governor will, will veto that, that piece of legislation or not. The time for, for doing so has to be really close. I'm guessing tomorrow could be the, the timeline for, since she's received the bill, to make that decision on whether or not to allow it to become law, sign it, or veto it. Let's talk a little bit about higher education budget. We had a very good year for higher education, probably one of the better years that we've had in quite some time since I've been reporting to you on, on the budget. Higher education overall saw $33 million in additional money for '19 and fiscal year '20. Senate Bill 155 was fully funded with an additional $4.5 million to bring that, that funding hole for fiscal year '19. That's the year that we're currently in. That ends on June 30th of, of this year. There is still some unknown about fiscal year 2020 for those dollars, but, but that will be at the top of the list when, when legislators come back next session. We're still waiting on certified budget numbers to know exactly where we fall at Johnson County Community College. In fact, this afternoon, after the Board of Regents meeting was over, I called the VP for Finance at the Board of Regents to see if we had any idea on what those numbers looked like, and they've not received the numbers from the Division of the Budget yet, so we don't, we don't know specifically what that looks like. We can say, based on the dollars that the governor recommended in, in her budget recommendations, that in fiscal year '19, for tiered funding, we can probably see in an approximate area of $167,000 in '19, and an additional $85,000 in, in '20. Similarly, for non-tiered courses, that number is about $403,000 for '19 and $205,000 for fiscal year '20. So those numbers should reflect differently once we know what the certified numbers are from the budget that the legislature passed. I'm not going to go into any detail about the Community College Transparency Act that was signed into law, but I did include a list of the things that are, that are in a brief format that the Legislative Research Department puts out, summarizes what the bill does, what we will be endeavoring to do by the time the law goes into effect in 2020. Most of those things we are already doing, but just, just for the record, and so that you would have it, I wanted to provide that breakdown of what is required by House Bill 2144. I wanted to talk a little bit about the face of the legislature and what that might look like when we start anticipating election filings and legislative filings. And so we know that Cindy Holsher, who represents the college in House District 19, has indicated that she will, she has announced that she's running for Senate District 8, which is the seat held by Senator Denning. There was a big press conference about that, however, she's not filed yet with the Secretary of State's office, but some that have filed, Representative Tom Cox, who represents House District 17, has filed for Senate District seat number 10, held by Mary Pilcher-Cook, and then shortly after his announcement, two Democrats filed for the seat currently held by Cox and Shawnee Laura Smith Everett, who lost a close race to Cox in 2018, and Joella Hoy, a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. So those two have filed and will be running for that seat. I'm certain that there will be additional folks that file for that seat as well. And then the seat that's currently held, House Seat 39, by Owen Donahue, he'll see a challenger in the general from Kevin, and I'm not gonna get his name right, but he's McAlus, I think is, is probably how you, how you pronounce it. He is a sitting school board member in the De Soto School District. So those are some, just some updates that we know for certain that will, folks who have filed with the Secretary of State's office that will be running in, in Johnson County for the 2020 election. It's unknown at this point. Again, I already said, if, if the legislature will have a desire or need to, to override any vetoes, but when they do that, that opportunity is, is May 29th. We don't anticipate that the Supreme Court will have delivered a decision on school finance by then. I, I think that will come later in, in June, before the state's fiscal year ends and the new one begins. But we have heard some rumblings about some interim committee activity as it relates to community colleges. This is originating in the House. There have been some conversations between the House Higher Ed Budget Chair and the House Appropriations Chair on what the mission of community colleges is. I look at that as an opportunity to tell our story. Some might look at that as, as a threat, but I think it's a great opportunity if, if it's approved, so that, so that's the, the first, first step. The request has to be submitted to the Legislative Coordinating Council, and then the Legislative Coordinating Council would need to approve that topic for study, and they would approve the number of days. I've heard that, what I've heard is that two days are being requested. I would be surprised if two days are granted, and, and I don't even know if the issue itself will be covered. The LCC has, has been limiting the number of meetings that, that they have during the interim, and so we'll see if that actually, actually happens. And then the final thing that I wanted to offer is that I've, I've received some good feedback from the governor's office on the visit that the governor had here on the 26th of April, both for the annual foundation lunch and for the ribbon cutting. She then went on to another meeting at the Overland Park Chamber, and that, the office was very pleased with the opportunity to come over here and kind of what happened, the interaction that she was able to have with, with the folks at the luncheon prior to the ribbon cutting. So I would just stop there, Mr. Chairman, and see if there's any.
Any questions, Mr. Carter? Trusty Cross?
I believe on page two, Mr. Carter, you talk about how foreign companies are not taxed on foreign, companies with headquarters in Kansas are not taxed on foreign earnings. Has it always been that way?
I believe it has. That's a result of the federal policy tax change, and so they will now, they would now be potentially taxed on those, on those earnings in Kansas. So there's a few companies that that would apply to that are headquartered in, in Kansas, or that have a presence in Kansas.
Then what does it mean, I think in the same paragraph, it says that reimplement small business expensing for both individuals and corporations at 100%?
That is one of the provisions that the Kansas Chamber desired to have back in the tax policy, and it has to do with when you can take, when you can take business expenses out of your, out of your tax filing year, depending on what year you're using it, and so they wanted that back in there as part of their, a part of their agenda. So I provided that just as some general background knowledge, because that's one of the big pieces that's in play that potentially could veto in the coming days.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Appreciate it, and hopefully we'll have a quick closing as well as a quick session, so. May 29th, last day?
It's on me, Doc.
Yeah. Next item is the Audit Report. That's found on pages one through three of your packet. The committee did meet on May 2nd. Trustees Ingram and I were present along with several staff. A couple highlights, representatives were there from Ruben Brown, and they outlined the schedule between May and November of the external audit processes, and there will be a full report to the board in November, and that's also in line with the work agenda that you have, that you get each month at the back of the packet, or when we give the Audit Report. Mr. McDade gave reports on our quarterly projects, which is the internal audit procedure with recommendations, and we have a pretty extensive matrix that includes who's doing what, when, where, and, and how, so that was, that was very detailed. Draw your attention to the Ethics Report line, quarterly report. Between January 1 and March 31st, we've had nine reports. As of the 25th of July, seven of them have been processed, and two are ongoing. I would also say, and I'll talk a little bit about this on my Collegial Steering Report, we've had the lowest reports, 2018 was the lowest report since 2012 on Ethics Report line, and so I'm always interested in the process, is it working? The people that manage all of that say it is, but I think that's a tribute, again, to how we're working with people and dealing with people that were having fewer reports. On the Annual Benchmarking Report, again, Mr. McDade gave a pretty extensive report. There are several bullet items that are in your packet. The benchmark is really based on the number of reports per 100 employees, and we always ask, who are we benchmarking against? And so we're, we're really getting numbers per 100 employees that, that I think make pretty good sense. There was a substantiation rate and, and how we do against the benchmark. We're lower in '18 than we were in '17. Closure time is lower than the benchmark, and the majority of the JCC's cases were web submissions, so the, you know, we, and a number of those are anonymous, but we do follow up as best as we can. Regarding HR, diversity, and workplace respect, that continues to be the highest number of them all. I want to talk more about that on my Collegial Steering Report, because that was a topic we had there as well, but still, less than what our benchmark report is. And I, it's just, we had a lot of detail on, going back to 2012 on each of the categories, and I think, Nancy, by the way, Ingram is on the line, she's ill and cannot be here, but Nancy, please feel free if, if I'm misrepresenting, but the college has consistently been better than the benchmark, and as I indicate, our numbers are better in '18 than they were previously. Do you have any comments about that, Nancy?
No, you did a nice job. Thank you.
Our next meeting is August 8th, quarterly meeting, so unless there are questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify, our case, it says our case closure time is lower than the benchmark. That means shorter, faster, better, as I read that.
Correct.
But I didn't know, I wanted to make sure what lower meant.
Correct.
It's faster, which is good.
Good point.
We get complaints, we get them closed faster than our benchmarks.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is Collegial Steering. We did meet on May 7th, and all members of the committees were there. Again, for the audience and the viewing members, we have representation from the Faculty Association, the Faculty Senate, Collegial Steering, Administration, and Trustees. Trustee Ingram is on that committee with me. One of the items that we talked about, and I put it on, along with Melanie Harvey of the Faculty Association, was diversity, equity, and inclusion. And there have been some discussions. You heard in a report last month from the Faculty Association, that there was a committee meeting to talk about that a little bit more. I had pointed out that, and Dr. McLeod and Dr. Sobchak have done some really good work in pulling together just what's going on on campus. We have 62 courses that are taught that deal with some variety of diversity, equity, inclusion, engagement. And then I think we have five additional courses that are non-credit. Those 62 are credit, maybe 57 that are credit and five non-credit, I don't remember there, but we have a large representation of courses being offered dealing with the topic. Last year, we had over 100 events on campus, dealing with the topic of diversity, equity, inclusion, and engagement. And so, I wanted to talk about that with those groups, to see just exactly what the issue is. And then, so we've got programs that I think are really strong. And then the other part, as far as I was concerned, the process. In other words, are there people being discriminated against for a variety of reasons that aren't being handled? And I refer back to the ethics report. We have the fewest ethics reports we've had since 2012. The items that are being reported are being dealt with in a very timely and, I think, professional manner by the Human Resource Department. And so, so what's the issue? And I think one of the members really got my attention and hit it on the head when she said, "Well, you know, we do have good programs, we do have a lot of events, but who do I go to if I have a question? Who do I go to as kind of the lead person?" And I thought, Dr. McLeod, and you certainly can speak to this, I don't want to represent you erroneously, but Dr. McLeod made the comment that it's a community responsibility. We all are engaged in what needs to be done with diversity, inclusion, equity, and engagement. And so, it's a communication. Who do I go to? What do I see? And we have talented people in each department that are pretty knowledgeable about these issues, and so I think I left there at least thinking, okay, we can improve upon our communication and letting all people know how we go about getting help and assistance. And then I think Dr. Sobchak made a great comment, and that is that every day, we can have additional training. This is something that we don't just say, we had a session on it and it goes away, because every day, we can learn a sensitivity of how we deal with all of these topics. So, Trustee Ingram, oh, you were absent from the meeting with your illness, but I would say, Dr. Sobchak and Dr. McLeod, any comment about, did I represent you guys wrong?
No, it sounds pretty close. I mean, this is a critical issue. It's very, very important. I mean, we have student senate representatives out there, and you've submitted a letter of support for this. We certainly want to take everything seriously and look at it through as many different ways as we can. But whatever we do, we want to make sure that we do the appropriate thing, and the results would be, the outcomes will be beneficial to everyone here on campus. So this issue is very important to us, it's very important to me personally. It's one we'll continue to explore and to look at, and I'm sure there'll be future meetings on it. So we look forward to you also, for your input and your help on this issue. And Keith, this could be one of your first initiatives. We look forward to working with you on this one. So, thank you, Jerry.
Remember when Trustee Musil said that it was good to have a little, I don't want to use the word controversy...
Friction.
...challenging?
Friction.
Friction. And you learn a lot with that, so table's set. Dr. McLeod?
I think that it's been, you know, stated multiple times. My position on it clearly is that, for this to be effective, it has to be a community effort. It cannot be the responsibility of one or two people, because while one or two people can be engaged to have wonderful ideas, change is required for the entire community if it's to be long-lasting, sustainable, and a true effort at sustaining what we want in diversity.
I also put morale on the agenda. We spent about 35 to 40 minutes on diversity, equity, inclusion, and engagement, then we talked about morale. And I wanted to have it on the agenda, because I've been on the board now 10 years, I'll be going on 11. And there are, from time to time, when people say, as a group, boy, morale's really bad on that campus, and morale's really low, and people aren't happy. And so, when I visit with individual people, I hear kind of the opposite. I've been here 30 years, I've been here 25 years, I love this campus, it's a great place to work, don't have a lot of turnover in staff, and so I just said, let's talk about this. What's going on? And I think what came out of that is that, yeah, there are times, there are issues when decisions are made that affect a group of people that they are not happy about. And so, the morale thing, again, is something we deal with every day. And how we approach the day, how we approach the task, this board makes decisions that not everybody's going to agree with, but I think we do the best we can to make decisions on the best interests of the students and of the college as a whole. I go back to Dr. McLeod's use of community. We are a community, and there are times when not all members of the community are happy with a decision that's made. But I always like the process of decision-making, and if we gather good information, we will have a chance to make a better decision for the organization. So we had a pretty good, healthy talk about that, but that's something that we'll continue to visit about. Our next Collegial Steering Meeting is in September, and I'm sure there will be some morale issues that will emerge over the summertime and each day, that will be topics at that point. So, it was a good discussion. Future membership, Dr. Sobchak just raised the issue of how we go about including faculty members on committees, and how we engage and get committee assignments. Had a little discussion on open education resources, we're making improvements in that as well. And then shared governance was on the agenda. Dr. Harvey was not at the meeting, and I don't think I see Dr. Harvey here tonight, but anyway, she has spoken to that in the last monthly meeting. We have shared discussion about that at Collegial Steering. In fact, we have agreed to a statement of shared governance that Dr. McLeod put together. And so, again, that's a topic that I'm sure we'll continue to have discussion. Good meeting, and as I say, our next meeting will be in September, when we convene another semester of school. Human Resources, Trustee Lawson is ill this evening, so Trustee Musil, are you prepared to give that report?
I can be. We met on Friday, May 3rd, at 8:00 a.m., in a meeting to really discuss the voluntary employee retirement benefit program that the board had adopted on March 21st at our March meeting. And in the interim, following that adoption, there were some, a couple of different messages posted for employees, and it's an important program for employees, because it allows employees to take an early retirement and to transfer their accrued sick leave into a health, what's the R-stamp?
Reimbursement.
Health reimbursement account, an HRA, that they can then use for health needs going forward, and initially also included a cash option, a cash-out option. We passed it in a general manner for staff then to implement. I appreciate the fact that Becky and her staff, Jerry, were concerned that the cash-out option, which would allow you to simply take cash in the payment, in payment your last year, would affect your capers' retirement, because your capers' retirement is based on your highest three years of income average, so if you get a bump in your last year, it will increase your capers' retirement benefit. And capers recognizing that, has a program that if you spike over 15%, then the employer, in this case, the college, would have to put in extra money into that retirement. And since we had only allocated $5.8 million, I say only, it's a big number, but that was the kind of the cap, staff was concerned that with the spike, we might go over that amount. I know that caused some anxiety to folks on campus, because people need to make a decision by July 1. And so, we held the meeting on May 3rd to review that. Staff did additional research with capers, reported back to Trustee Lawson and myself that, after looking at all of the people that might be eligible to take advantage of the voluntary employee retirement benefit program, it is highly unlikely that anybody would trigger the spike provision, which would mean costing the college more money than we had anticipated. So, they have republished the program with both the cash-out and the HRA option, which I think is what everybody thought would work in the first place, and staff has done the additional research to make it work. And I know there was anxiety on campus, and I know there was, there was extra work by Becky and Jerry, and I want to thank you for doing that and getting this clarified for everybody. I particularly appreciate the fact that we came back to the HR Committee, came back to the board to report on it, but that when we had set a number of 5.8 million, which we had to allocate and set aside in our reserves for that, that you were careful in the instance where you thought it might exceed that, that we take another look at it. So, the bottom line is, the only thing that happened to our committee was that report, and we're simply reporting back to the board that, as passed in March, it will be implemented with both the cash-out, either the cash-out option or the HRA, based on the employees, the eligible employee's decision.
Thank you. Appreciate that, and I know that takes some extra work, but ship's on course and straight ahead. Okay? Any questions? Thank you. Learning Quality, Trustee Snyder?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Learning Quality Committee met May 6th at 8:30. There are no recommendations this month. As outlined in the packet, the focus of our meeting was to receive an overview of the Math and Sciences Department, and then also, we received an update from Dr. Weber on the stakeholder feedback received on the PROMIS program. Staff continues to seek feedback, and will be deciding the best timing and way to engage the board as we move forward. I believe the goal is still to seek approval of the program sometime this fall. That concludes my report.
Any questions of Trustee Snyder on Learning Quality?
I have a question, because there's a note in here that a retreat, a work session to evaluate the PROMIS program was recommended before it's brought. Is that something that would happen over the summer, or at some...
Probably do that maybe in early fall. We want to get the input from various legislators, that we could report to the trustees at that time and put it all together. So that's what we're looking at.
But that would happen at least the monthly meeting before it would be considered for a vote?
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Management, Trustee Ingram is ill, but on the phone, but I think, Trustee Snyder, you're going to be giving her report for management?
Yes, I am. So thank you again, Mr. Chairman. The Management Committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, May 1st, here in the Board Room. The information related to the management meeting begins on page 13 and runs through page 25 of the Board Packet. The committee received several presentations from staff. The first from Denise Griffey, Program Manager for Early College Community Outreach and STEM, presented information on several agreements for concurrent enrollment partnerships, and also college close-to-home agreements. Those are all on pages 46 to 48, are part of the consent agenda tonight. Rachel Leers provided semi-annual update on college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Rex Hayes, Vice President of Facility Planning, gave the monthly progress report on capital infrastructure projects. Those are detailed on page 22 of the packet, and then he gave an update on the construction projects across campus. Janelle Vogler presented the Single Source Purchase Report. We do have a number of recommendations this evening. The first will start with the recommendation related to the fiscal year 2019-2020 management budget. So for that, Rachel Leers reviewed the management budget recommendation. As the board is aware, we have followed the progress of the budget development for several months. The guidelines used to inform the budget were adopted by the board last December 13th of 2018. Last month's board included, meeting included an hour-long budget workshop, at which board members and the public heard detailed presentation of the proposed fiscal year 1920 budget. Included within the Board Packet is the staff's recommendation to adopt the budget as presented last month. There was discussion at the Management Committee about a potential amendment to the recommendation as presented, that discussion was around lowering the mill levy. But I would first like to read the administration's recommendation for the record. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approved the fiscal year 2019-20 management budget, subject to adjustments as required when final beginning balances and assessed valuation amounts have been determined. At this time, there may be a motion on the administration's recommendation or an alternative recommendation.
Well, the motion that we discussed last month, and the motion that I think you're proposing as far as the administration goes, calls for a mill levy of 9.266, or what was budgeted, based on an assessed valuation of 4% increase. Is that correct?
That would be the administration's recommendation.
Right, that was the original...
The Management Committee did not forward anything but the administration's recommendation. There was conversation, I actually asked the question whether we could change that recommendation in committee, and were advised that we could not, although there appeared to me to be support in the Management Committee.
I just wanted to clarify that that was the mill levy, and that was the assumed assessed valuation, but now that the assessed valuation is coming higher, Trustee Musil, it's now, I think, 5.75 is what the assessor is saying. There's the question of then, should the college benefit by that increase in assessed valuation? So, I guess back to you, Trustee Snyder, then, the committee is forwarding at this time to call for a motion of the administration's recommendation of 9.266 mill over a 5.75 assumed assessed valuation. Is that correct?
Or an alternative motion.
Why don't we see if there's a motion to approve that budget? So moved. Is there a second? Is there a second? Nancy, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second? So not having a second, then I guess I would entertain what the alternative motion might be.
Before we entertain this charade any further...
It's not a charade, Trustee.
How is it that we can entertain an alternative motion without having it heard in a committee?
Well, we did discuss, a month ago, the discussion of the mill levy. I think, I think the original discussion on this, should we have the full mill levy, even went back to last fall, when we started the budget process. I think I would like to have Management Committee talk about your discussion in the committee. Where evidently, Trustee Lindstrom, Trustee Ingram, you were talking about that mill levy adjustment as it relates to increased assessed valuation. So what was your discussion, Trustee Snyder?
Well, we didn't have a thorough discussion. We probably had a more thorough discussion at last month's board meeting, that fully flushed out some of those. Going back to, it would be the, I believe, March Management Committee, we had had some additional discussion where each of the trustee members of that committee were volunteered what their position would be relative to a mill levy decrease.
So, I guess I, I don't think it's a charade. I think we've had discussion about where that mill levy should be and where to go, but, Trustee Musil?
Well, yeah, I would object to calling it a charade when we're talking about setting the mill levy, which is one of our number-one priorities, and no committee recommendation comes here with an automatic motion and a second from a board member. The fact that they normally receive a motion in a second means that the person, the two people on this board, agree with that. I will move now, so we can have discussion, I will move to adopt the management budget with a .15 mill levy decrease, and then I'll explain it if I get a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the management budget with a decrease in the mill of .15? Is that correct? Correct. Explain.
And I want to make sure Barbara and Rachel correct me, is that the right number?
That is.
And my rationale is very simple, and I think I explained, I've explained it probably ad nauseam to everybody, including at last month's budget workshop.
No objection.
Yeah. Thank you, Trustee Cross. We budgeted in December, a mill levy that would stay stable, based on a 4% assessed valuation increase. The actual total valuation increase was 6.75% percent, and we've reduced that to 5.75% because we know there will be some delinquencies in payment, and we know some people will appeal their taxes and receive a reduction. So we're taking a conservative amount at 5.75%, which would yield $1.6 million more for the college coffers from property taxpayers than we projected in December. And it is always the easy thing to do, in my opinion, is to accept that additional money. With, the budget as projected, and I mentioned this last month, we will have increased the amount of property tax revenues received from taxpayers in five years, from $85 million to $105 million. 23% increase in property taxes. And during that time, we have still managed, we have used that money to fund the facilities' master... we have still managed, we have used that money to fund the Facilities Master Plan, to keep tuition flat for three years, to do other things on campus, including raises for faculty and staff, and we still have healthy reserves and a healthy financial picture. I don't, I can't see it in my future to say, we're going to take an additional $1.6 million from taxpayers when we're in that situation, and we're projecting a 6% decrease in enrollment for next year. We can fund what we need to fund with the additional $4 million we're going to get this year, even with the rollback of the mill levy. We are not in a situation like cities and counties that are under a property tax lid, who are worried that if they lower their mill levy, they won't be able to raise it again. We're not in that situation. We don't, we're not under that statutory cap. So if in the future, this Board and, and the Administration and the people on campus demonstrate a compelling need for more funding than we have, we can consider raising the mill levy, as we did in 2013, which I supported. So this is about funding what we need, not necessarily what we want, and I just don't see how it would be fair to property taxpayers whose percentage of the budget has gone from 56% of general revenues to 66% of general revenues, how that's fair to them to say, you should pay a little more, even though we don't know exactly what, what we, we need that for. As part of the budget process, I think it's interesting in our clips today, because we had a brouhaha about our $1 credit hour tuition increase, that with the out-of-state and out-of-county, we were going to raise an additional $450,000, not $4 million, not 5.6 million. KU's recommending an increase of $3.36 an hour, credit hour. K-State's recommending a $6.56 increase. University of Missouri, UMKC, and its, its campuses are recommending a $14 to a $17 per credit hour tuition increase, and a $7 to $13 fee increase per credit hour. We've been, we've been very fair, I think, to our students. I'm sorry, the student senators had to leave. We've been, I think we've been very fair to them over the last four or five years with, with one tuition increase of $1 per credit hour, and at the same time, we've asked our property taxpayers to pay more and more because of increased assessed value. All we said, I accept the increase in assessed, in assessed value because I think we, we contribute to it. We're an economic driver. We help Johnson County grow, and that means our values grow. But we should only accept what we need and what we truly have budgeted for, and that's why I made the motion.
Trustee Snyder.
I agree with, with Trustee Musil. At this time, I'd like to invite Rachel Leers up. I'm not, I'm unclear whether she has a proactive presentation or just wants to make herself available for, for questions.
And I don't have any additional presentation. I can, can we bring that up from last time? Just the presentation from last month, just if there are any other questions, just to put the numbers kind of back on the screen. Be happy to do that.
Well, she's pulling that up. Can I make one point of clarification? We're not budgeting for a 6% decrease in enrollment. We have over-budgeted tuition revenues for enough years that we're bringing it back by 6% to, to kind of right-size. So it's been, the over-budget the last couple of years, so we're not anticipating a 6% decrease.
We are budgeting a credit hour decrease and a student headcount.
Tuition revenues, because we've over-budgeted tuition revenues for the last couple of years.
But are, but are we not budgeting a credit hour decrease?
We are.
And a headcount decrease? Not 6%. I understand what you're saying. We're trying to right-size it, but we still don't believe we'll have as many students taking as many credit hours next fall.
Trustee Ingram, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I mean, I give you guys this. I mean, a broken clock is right twice a day. So you're consistent, if nothing else. There's a principle in political science about how decisions are not made in meetings, like that's known. So how we could have the Administration make a recommendation, the Committee passes out a recommendation, and here we are, discussing this now, is a little bit bewildering. So nevertheless, I don't understand the harm at a good economic time of keeping the revenues where they're at, in anticipation of what many people talk about, whether it's Bloomberg or Global Finance, that we're expecting a downturn. So you're going to want to raise the mill back up, potentially someday, when we need to, in a bad economy. I'd rather keep the money we have now and hold it in reserve to fund our students at the affordable, I mean, I, growing up in the shadow of this college and at this college, I don't understand the argument of Johnson County Community College way better than those other alternatives, and not quite as bad as raising the money on you. Like, it's Johnson County Community College. Like, we're a great college. I don't understand why we can't pocket the money away and save it for a rainy day like we've always done. So-
Well, I, let me respond to that. I, first of all, I, I don't want to get in a debate with you here about this not being discussed in public, because we've discussed this in Board retreats for a year. We discussed it last month, to say if you have questions about whether we keep it or not, to, to raise questions and discuss with staff. The Management Committee-
But we're not going to trust staff here.
Excuse me, excuse me. The Management Committee has dealt with it in committee on more than one occasion, and it's not a matter of keeping excess money, it's, it's the, it's the matter of how much, because an increase in assessed valuation of more than we had planned is the question of, do we keep it or do we give it back to the taxpayer, which is their money in the first place? And we're getting additional, I think, Dr. Larson, at, at the original 4% assessed valuation, it's still between $3 and $4 million of additional dollars from the taxpayers. So we are getting additional money, and we're not giving back money that wasn't, that was ours in the first place. So-
You don't want to debate me, but you want to mock me?
No, I'm not mocking you.
Your last, your last phrase and sentence right there was-
I'm just, I'm just saying that we've had this discussion in public.
We have had this discussion, and every time it's convenient for the majority here to cut the mill, they cut the mill. All the while, they raised tuition on the students.
$1 in four years, I don't think, if, is, is a significant amount.
Well, you cut the mill twice in a year.
Trustee Musil?
Well, I, you know, Trustee Cross and I disagree on this issue, and, and that's fine, and we can, we can discuss it and, and exercise our judgment, but the continued assertion that raising tuition $1 a credit hour on Johnson County students after three years of no increases, an amount that for Johnson County students raises about $230,000, is the equivalent of the $20 million we have taken in additional property tax revenues over the same period of time. It's simply not equivalent. And we all up here want Johnson County Community College to stay accessible and affordable, and it is not the $1 credit hour increase that will make this unaffordable or inaccessible. As I've said before, it's your transportation, it's your second job, it's your childcare, and we need to work on those areas so that we can have additional scholarships and additional emergency funding and other things. But if you look at what has happened to the revenues of this college, property tax revenues have gone from the mid-50s to the higher 60s in the last, since I've been on the Board. Tuition has gone from 25% of our operating revenues to 18% of our operating revenues. So I think we've been very fair and very focused on keeping this affordable. And the thought that, well, let's just keep another million six because we might need it in the future, is, we've raised, I mean, we have, we have cut the mill three times. This will be the third time since I've been on the Board in eight years, we will have cut the mill.
Fourth time.
We've cut it, we cut it .02 in, if you look at page 16 of the Budget Book, .02, which is virtually zero, because it goes up and down based on, that's not a, that's not a mill levy cut, that's the, what the treasurer does to us.
Correct.
So we cut it by .09 in '14, '15. We cut it by .24 last year, and we would cut it by .15 this year if this vote passes, and passes in the August public hearing when we have passed the official budget. We raised it .77 mills in 2013, '14, and at the time, Trustee Cross, I think you said we ought to raise it two mills instead of the one mill that the, that the Administration had suggested at the time. So we have, while I've been on this Board, we have raised the mill levy significantly more than we have reduced the mill levy, and that is factual, and that is without regard to assessed valuation.
Trustee Cross?
Yeah, I think the gentleman, Mr. Trustee Musil, two mills would be, be a start, and in the time you've been on the Board, while we're throwing stones here, the mill, this, the tuition and fees went up 68% from '08 to '15, and was frozen because some of us had raised concerns about student fees and tuition going up 68% in the midst of a bad economy. So again, while I understand and appreciate that tuition and fees have gone down as a total part of the overall budget, it ignores reality of what happened in the midst of the Great Recession. So two mills was suggested as a matter to, and I'd be more interested in your argument, sir, if you put more pressure on your legislative allies to amend and correct a horrendous tax cut in 2012 and '13, of which I've heard you spend little time talking about, and the overall downside of the state's investment in us. I mean, there's no talk there. So I can understand and appreciate alleviating the local tax burden. I'm a taxpayer too, and a business owner. So the idea that I don't care about that is offensive, and frankly, the idea that this wasn't discussed or planned before is also appalling to human intelligence. So I thank you for your time at this meeting, sir.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. I, again, will say that it's not a surprise tonight that we're even considering the possibility of a lesser mill levy than what was approached by the Administration several months ago. And, Trustee Snyder, any other comment from the Committee?
No, thank you.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt the Management Budget with a reduction in the mill levy of .15 that I think would bring it to 9.116, if my math is correct, over the assessed valuation. And again, that's dependent upon assessed valuation numbers and that we will be smarter about in August than we are today. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So I have it as four to one approved. Trustee Snyder, please continue with your report.
I think you have several other recommendations. Next relates to a guaranteed maximum price or GMP for the Arts and Technology Building that was part of the Facilities Master Plan. We are moving forward. We've gotten stakeholder feedback on the design of that plan. J. Dunn has worked with the design team stakeholders to come up with this GMP. The renovated ATB will house management, construction management program, space for a future program and machine tool technology, and a large space for general, general welding programs for the college and for BNSF. In addition, the grounds and maintenance services will be relocated to the WLV, to the, from the WLV to the northeast corner of the ATB. As proposed, the GMP is slightly higher than what was first budgeted by approximately $89,000. The GMP comes in at $14,367,482. The, that delta for the $89,000 was found through, cost savings through the Chiller Plant Expansion. So the project will soon be closed out, and the owners making savings available to this ATB project. This project is expected to be completed by March of 2020. So with that is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the guaranteed maximum price proposal from J. E. Dunn Construction Company for construction manager at risk services for renovations to the Arts and Technology Building in the amount of $14,367,482, and I will make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is a continuation of our master facilities project, so the next phase, and we'd always planned that once we had the new Career and Tech Ed building, that we would renovate the, the existing ATB building into this facility. I think a major part of that is that we, you'll be reminded we have a multi-year contract agreement with BNSF, and a number of the welding stations are going to be committed to them. So any questions or discussion on the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is a recommendation for on-call service contracts. The Management Committee reviewed 11 RFPs for on-call services from Ms. Vogler. All these are renewals of existing contracts, and they are for architectural services, carpentry, civil engineering, code consulting, electrical repairs, landscape design, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing engineering services, structural engineering, painting and wall covering, plumbing and roof consulting. If the Board is agreeable, I would suggest that we take all these in one motion. And with that, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the renewal of the above annual on-call contracts for an at-total annual expenditure not to exceed $1,250,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any item that a Board Member would like to have pulled off of that motion to deal with individually? These are routine, they still go through the staff evaluation of working with this particular vendor from year to year to year. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Next is a recommendation for an RFP for waste disposal and recycling services. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the proposal from WCA for waste disposal and recycling services at $47,893 for the base year and a total expenditure not to exceed $254,270.44 for the base year plus all option years. I will make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Ingram seconds. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The final recommendation is for talent management software. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the College Administration to approve the new contract award to Page Up People Unlimited for an initial one-year total not to exceed $67,200, with an estimated five-year total not to exceed $433,711 for the Human Resources Department, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Ingram seconds. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
President's recommendations for action. The first is the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Musil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report is found in your packet at page 26. It contains the report for the month ended March 31, 2019. Some items of note, page one is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. March was the ninth month of the college's 2018-2019 fiscal year. We received $3.4 million from Johnson County in March for property taxes assigned to the General Fund, the Special Assessment Fund, and the Capital Outlay Fund. The unencumbered cash balance as of March 31 in all funds was $106 million, approximately $8 million lower than the same time next year. All expenditures in primary operating funds are within the approved budgetary limits. And with that, it's the recommendation of the College Administration that the Board approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended March 31, 2019, subject to audit and ISO move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Sapchik, monthly report to the Board.
Thanks, Dr. Cook. First, I'd like to point out, the monthly Board Report, it reflects incredible, an incredible amount of work across this college by, by faculty and staff, all either learning more about their disciplines or serving the needs of the students. Very thorough. I hope you get a chance to read it. It's about 40 pages. It's outstanding. You know, May is really, I think, one of the best times of the year. It, and mainly because of what's happening on campus, not the issues that sometimes overwhelm us and that we have to deal with, but issues with regards to student success. There are so many celebrations and presentations going on, and I have the honor of attending a few of them. And each one is unique. They are all very special, and I'd just like to share some of these experiences with you that I've had over the past, past few weeks. I don't know how many of you had the chance to go to our Fashion Merchandising and Design Show. It's absolutely remarkable. It featured 11 student collections. 11 students designed an array of outfits. It goes on in Yardley Hall. The production values by our Carlson Center staff are absolutely very professional. It's like anything you would see on TV. It's, it's excellent. The, the highlights, though, the highlights are the excitement of the designers, our student designers onstage. Some of them even bring their children onstage and, and lead them over the, the runway as they go through the, through the whole show. But it's the quality of the work, and their families that cheer in the audience, and you walk out of that performance or that presentation in awe of what our students can do, but also in awe of what that kind of instruction in the classroom, what results from that. Wonderful experience. The Math and Science poster session is another example of, of something that is truly- The math and science poster session is another example of something that is truly awesome. You know, when I walk through those posters and I talk to the students about their projects, I'm kind of amazed by their enthusiasm for bacteria, soil nutrients, and Petri dishes. They're so revved up about it that it's really exhilarating. It's one of the coolest things that happens during the semester. They can talk to you about their experiments for easily 30 minutes or more. When you ask them, what are they going to do when they grow up, you gain an inspiring insight into their lives, not just here while they were in school, but also in the future. I think this poster session is something that everyone should have on their calendars and attend every semester. The BNSF Awards Luncheon provides the opportunity to commemorate members of our faculty and staff who go above and beyond when it comes to instruction in the classroom and initiatives on campus. Always, always a fun event. The Lieberman Teaching Excellence Awards honors the contribution of adjunct faculty who had to be nominated by their full-time faculty colleagues. This year, the event was especially spirited. I have to say that probably due to the fabulous array of hors d'oeuvres and beverages that were provided, but what really drives that thing is the incredible mention of the high quality of work that's done by our adjuncts and how it gets recognized. It was a lot of fun. The Outstanding Student Award Luncheon features several of our outstanding students who had to be nominated by faculty and staff in order to be recognized. When these students share their personal histories, we are overwhelmed and we admire them even more. Right now, as we're meeting, the web development capstone presentations are underway. This event features our students who have the opportunity to address real-world challenges that confront local businesses and organizations. Our CLEAR certificate ceremony, CLEAR stands for College Learning Experiences, Activities, and Resources, honors the accomplishments of our students who overcome great adversity every day. This event is one of the most inspirational of the semester. The Athletic Awards Night featured the accomplishments of our teams and recognized the MVPs and academic MVPs from each squad. This year, the keynote was delivered by James McGinnis, who, while playing football for Aletha East in 2014, suffered life-threatening injuries after a collision on the field, and was only able to walk and speak again after months, years of physical and speech therapy. James is currently a student here at JCCC. These events, and this is just a few of them, that happen at the end of the semester, all lead us to numerous recognition ceremonies, starting tomorrow night with our Honors Program graduation in the Nerman's Hudson Auditorium. These events will continue almost every evening during next week, and culminating in our general commencement exercises on Friday, honoring the accomplishments of our graduating students. You know, after several weeks of this special kind of excitement, we can all be so very proud of what we've made happen as a college community. Together, we can join together in celebration, honoring the accomplishments of our students, because in every single case, as a campus, we fulfilled our mission of inspiring learning, transforming lives, and strengthening our community. It's a great time of the year.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions of Dr. Sobchak? I want to thank all of you for signing up for the graduation. I think Ms. Schlist has kept a pretty good account of having at least two at each graduation ceremony, and I think absent illnesses, you've really done a nice job volunteering for that and going to those, so thank you very much. It's very important. I don't think we have any old business tonight. We don't have any new business. I don't see Dr. Harvey here. Is there anybody from the Faculty Association representing Dr. Harvey? Seeing none. Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle, also known as J-Cert, met Monday, April 22, 2019, 7:30 a.m. at the KU Edwards Campus. We met and were called to order by Mayor Carl Gerlach, Commissioner Janay Hanslick, Senator Barbara Boye, and I were welcomed to the committee as new members of the authority. And Dr. Frank Link, an economist at KU and a UMKC graduate, gave us a report on the 10-year economic study and impact of, by mark, essentially of J-Cert and its impact on the greater Kansas City economy. Essentially, we come out at about a 1% to 3% impact on the total economy, and truly a fascinating study ahead of the overall goal of the J-Cert project. Updates were provided by K-State Aletha, KU Edwards, and the KU Medical Center, as well as various updates from Public Relations Consultant Susie Parker. And it was a privilege to be there, and I appreciate this board sending me there despite our differences. I do appreciate the honor of serving there, and that everyone here serves in good faith and goodwill. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of trustee Cross? KACC, trustee Lawson is ill. I know that the next meeting of KACC is June 7th and 8th, I believe, at Great Bend. Trustee Ingram, you're still an officer of that. Any report you'd like to make for KACC? I think you have a new executive director.
We do have a new executive director. However, we are waiting to make that public announcement until May the 22nd, Dr. Cook, so I won't do that this evening.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But we're very, nonetheless, we're very excited with who we have selected. It was an executive committee choice, and also we had a group of presidents who met and interviewed four different candidates as well, and made the same selection. So we're very excited. She will be at Barca County on June 7th and 8th, and will be introduced at that time as well. So we're looking forward to new leadership.
Thank you, and I hope you're feeling better tomorrow, my friend.
Thank you very much.
Foundation, trustee Musil.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Foundation Board met Friday, April 26th, as part of the Foundation's annual luncheon and part of the Fine Arts and Design Studio ribbon cutting and dedication ceremony. I almost said FANS, and then I realized, I can't say the acronym. I have to say the whole name. It was a good event with a good turnout, and it was wonderful to have Governor Kelly attend, make some comments at the luncheon, and then help us in the ribbon cutting. She recognized outgoing Foundation President Mary Birch, who's been a staunch supporter of not only this college, but civic and public and charitable efforts all over the county. Thank you to the entire FANS team, facility, catering, marketing, and other campus colleagues to make the day wonderful, and whoever did the weather did a good job. During the lunch, the Foundation Board of Directors approved a slate of new executive committee members, directors, and foundation members who will start on July 1, 2019, and this includes Sue's Parker of Parker Communications, who will become the Foundation's new president, succeeding Mary Birch. On May 4th, the Cohen Community Series presented Roots and Boots '90s Electric Throwdown. More than 1,000 people attended the concert, featuring country legends Sammy Kershaw, Colin Ray, and Aaron Tippin. The Cohen Community Series inaugurated in 2008 through a gift from former trustee John Stewart in honor of the late Barton P. Cohen. And because of the gift from John, all the proceeds from ticket sales go directly to student scholarships and educational programs, and the two greatest songs in the history of country music were presented that night. "She Stopped Loving Him Today," and what was the other one?
"Take This Job and Shove It."
"Take This Job and Shove It." Exactly. It was a great evening, and everybody had a good time.
That's a quote.
That's a quote.
Just kidding.
The Foundation recently welcomed a new employee to the team, Sandy Rieger, joined on Monday, April 29, as a manager of Foundation operations. She has more than 30 years of banking operations, management, and nonprofit office management, so we welcome Sandy to the Foundation team, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next item is the consent agenda. It's a time when we deal with a number of routine motions and items. Does anyone have an item they'd like to pull off the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cross. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no executive session. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'd like to thank the trustees for their spirited debate on the mill. I think it's important to be able to disagree and have those kinds of discussion, and what matters most is that everybody's on the same page with regards to doing what is in the best interest of the college. So I want to thank you for that, and we'll all walk out of here still talking to one another, and that's what matters most, right? So, thank you.
Well, I don't know about that.
Yes.
First time ever.
All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
We need a motion.
Aye.
Snyder and Ingram.
Okay.
We are adjourned. Thank you.